And we're gonna breathe in. And breathe out. Inhale. And exhale. You're doing amazing. Just do your best to follow right along with me. Let your body do its thing. Grab a sip of water if you need to. Cough, adjust, and then find your breath. Breathing in. Soft exhale. Breathe in. And exhale. Alright, and you can really start to feel the bodies getting activated. You can feel, you can feel yourself, you can feel the symptoms. Whatever you're experiencing right now, take three deep, really slow breaths in and open up the congested areas. Let's do it together. And again, nice, deeper breath in if you can. One more big, deeper breath, open it up like a balloon. Awesome, you're doing great. And we go back to the gentle breathing. Inhaling. Softening the exhale. Inhale. Softening the exhale. You're doing beautifully. And my breathing might sound a little different than yours. And that's okay. Just keep focusing on your mind, your body. And do your best to open your body up with that big, beautiful breath in. Big breath in. The symptoms will start to relax over the next five minutes. So it can be quite triggering in the beginning of the session. So try to ease off the pressure. Give yourself a break. Nice, soft, deep breath in, opening up your symptoms. And softening the exhale. The fact that you're here is more than enough. You're doing amazing. Big breath in. Soften the exhale. Inhale. And exhale. Stretch your legs out. Cough. Clear your throat. If you have any triggers, speak them out of the body. Meaning like, if this is starting to trigger, upset. Ah, you know, it's just, the first part of the session's not very comfortable. And you might start to get itchy. And then, yeah. You might start to get cold, grab a blanket. And then come right into the breathing again, it'll, it's passing. So if you're feeling all the activations, it's meaning, it's meaning that the session's working. So now you're in it. It will get better. Okay, you're gonna feel so good by the time we're done. Okay, so some of you might be nose breathing, some of you might be mouth breathing. If you have been experiencing confusion in the mind, headaches, I want you to, if you have any upper body stuff, like from your shoulders up, I want you to focus on taking about four second inhales, okay? So for you nose breathing, go like this. And just imagine opening up those symptoms in the mind. And during this part of the session, let your mind wander. Let it go where it goes, let it get really activated. That means that the oxygen's working, it's clearing it, it's clearing out. You'll feel a lot peaceful, a lot more peace here shortly. Okay, and for those of you who have, like, from your, your heart down, whatever symptoms, achiness, joint stuff. Let's do some mouth breathing. So you're gonna try to inhale for about three to four seconds, let's do it together. No pauses, no holds, inhaling. There you go, you got this. And don't be afraid of, of the body, don't be afraid of the thoughts coming through. Just keep on gently breathing. Now, this will be unpleasant if you're forcing the breath. So remember in the beginning, very gentle. Please be gentle on yourself, if you've been through a lot. So we're gonna breathe in. Soft exhale. Beautiful, you're doing great, breathing in. Soft exhale. Inhale. Exhale. If you have that heaviness in your chest, don't be afraid of it. Blast it open with that big breath in. Make more room in the body with that breath in. Um, there might be a moment when you're opening up your chest and your belly, and it like catches. And you wanna keep opening up that catch. And just doing that for a few minutes straight is really gonna help clear that area for you. You're doing amazing. You're doing great, keep going. I'm getting really sweaty over here. This is opening up the drainage. It's okay if you fidget. Let the mind go wherever it goes. It's part of the session. You don't have to change anything about you. Just keep breathing and the oxygen will do all the work for you. You are safe, you are loved, you are protected. It's all gonna be okay. And really slow yourself down. Let yourself be with your body right now. Let yourself check in with the symptoms. Let yourself feel any pain or heaviness. Yeah. Any congestion, any tightness, any body aches. Just let yourself be with it. And let's send three loving, supportive breaths. And just kind of open it up with love. There we go, open it up with support. Open up the body symptoms with tenderness and kindness. You are loved, you are safe, you are supported. It's all gonna be okay. And kind of notice where you are now from when we first started. Is there a little more room in the body? What are your sinuses doing? The body aches. If they're increasing, that means it's almost cleared. It's just working its way out. So trust your body. Trust yourself. You are safe, loved, and supported. Yeah, move around if you need to. Yeah, move that neck for sure. Whatever you gotta do, but keep the breath going. Take three deep breaths in. Send yourself that love. You got it. You're safe. It's all gonna be okay. And some of you may feel buzzing and tingling. And it just means the oxygen's working its way through. If you can, really try to give yourself a break. You've been through a lot over the last couple years. You are beautiful. You are strong. You got this. You are beautiful. You are strong. You got this. Yeah, and let yourself sink into the body a little more. I don't want you to be hard on your body or the symptoms. Or if you think you're doing this right or wrong, you're doing amazing. Just showing ups enough, that's it. Let's invite three loving breaths down through the body. Wherever you need the extra flow, the extra love and support, open it up with that big breath in and blast your body with the oxygen. Don't be afraid to breathe. Don't be afraid to go for it. Don't be afraid of the symptoms. They're there to show you something. You're doing amazing, breathing in. And breathe out. This is the part of the session where the body gets phlegmy, things are moving out. Grab a sip of water, clear, blow your nose, whatever you gotta do. Everything you're doing is more than, more than enough. Everything you're doing is more than enough. Inhale. Exhale. Exhale. Breathe in. And exhale. You are safe. It's all okay. The body knows how to heal itself. Take three deep, loving breaths, open up your symptoms. Slowing the breath down. I want you to inhale for three to four seconds, even if it's hard to do it. You got it, you can do it. Yeah, beautiful. Yeah, everything you're doing is more than enough. For those of you who are new, the first couple chapters of the session, it's about, it's clearing out. And then, the other part of the session is like where you can just relax and flow. So we're almost to that part where the body has really cleared out. You're doing amazing. Breathing in love. Letting the rest go. Breathing in, inhaling support. And just letting the rest go. You are safe. I'm doing the best I can. Beautiful, you're doing amazing. I'm so proud of all of you, you're doing great, breathe in. Letting the exhale fall. Opening everything up. Letting it all go. You are safe. Yeah, and as you breathe, I want you to let yourself feel your connection, your knowingness. Let yourself feel the mind and where the mind's going and what it's saying. And take three deep, loving breaths in through the nose. Yeah. You're doing good over there, Cam, good job. This is not easy to do, everyone, so it's okay to get squirmy. And it's also okay to just let yourself be in it. It's all part of the session, and then come back into it. Okay, and then let's invite three deep breaths right into your throat. For those of you who have any throat issues going on. Just give our throat some love. It's safe to speak up, it's safe to speak our truth. And wherever your body needs that love and support, this is how powerful you are. I want you to really open up the congestion, the heaviness, the tingling, the chest pain, whatever you're going through, everyone's different. Just gently open it up with a four second inhale. Soften the exhale. Let's do that again. Keep that rhythm going. We're breathing in. Soft exhale. Big breath in. Soft exhale. You're doing so good. You're doing so beautifully. Everyone's going through their own process right now. You're doing great. Just being really loving and kind, no matter what your body's doing. Just send it that love and the support and the strength you need to open up the symptoms. So really adjust the breath. It's all about slowing everything down in the body. And gently opening it up with each breath that you take. I'm so proud of you. And during this part of the session, you just wanna thank our bodies. We wanna thank our temples, our connection, our gut feelings. We wanna thank the anxiety, the heaviness in the chest. All the symptoms. Just thank it real quick, just honor it. Sometimes this has to happen to slow us down. So there might be a better direction or a better way. Or maybe your body's like, hey, can you just slow down and love yourself a little bit through this experience? You don't have to push so hard, can you just be nice to yourself? And let's take three loving breaths in. Just honor your body, the symptoms. Just thank, thank the symptoms for being here. And they're on their way out, sometimes we have to have body symptoms to stop us in our tracks. So the new can come in. Breathe in. And breathe out. And just keep breathing while I speak. A little example would be, the last relationship I was in was really abusive. And my body literally stopped me. I couldn't get out of bed for three days straight. Cause it was like, uh-uh girlfriend. This guy's not good for you. And I'm gonna show you what happens when you can't move, how he really treats you. And man, oh man, I'm so grateful that my body stopped me. So I could really see and step out of the illusion and see what was really going on. And I just found my breath, breathing in. And breathe out. So we wanna be really kind with your bodies right now. With whatever you're experiencing. And let's take three loving breaths in to open up the symptoms, you got it. You're doing great. If any of you have lower back pain, imagine opening up the lower part of your back up like a balloon with each breath in. And really go for it. If any of you, if it's still hard to kind of take a big, deep breath in, like if you're taking really short breaths, I want you to go for it, don't be afraid to take a big breath in. Stretch out those lungs. Even if it kind of hurts, even if it's uncomfortable to do it, do it anyway, it's gonna pass here in just a few seconds, you got this. Do it right along with me, you can do it. Don't hold yourself back. You got this. Big breath out. Big breath in. Just know with each breath that you breathe that you are safe. This is all part of the session. You see, nothing bad has happened, nothing bad's happening. Just let the body do its thing. Checking in with the body, are your symptoms dissipating? Are they more, are they less? And take three really slow breaths in. So just keep breathing while I speak. Remember in the beginning when I shared about that forty-five minute mark? So we are coming into that, that big part of the session. You are so beautiful. You're doing so amazing. Really take your time through this last part. And we're all in this together. So just know you're not alone. Slowing the breath down. See if you can feel the oxygen go all the way down into your toes. And whatever you need right now, whatever your body needs, whatever you need emotionally, use your breath to pull it into your body. And it'll activate the vibration for you to receive. You're so beautiful. You're doing amazing. You got this. And keep the breath going. Breathe in. Breathe out. Breathe in. Breathe out. Big breath in. Soft exhale. You are so powerful. Take three even deeper breaths in. Just blast open your body. Let me hear you breathe. Really open it up, okay? This part of the session, so we got, we got you ready for, for the session. Now you can really feel everything. You can feel what the body's storing, maybe what it's holding on to in this part of the session. Go for it. Let it get a little bit out of control. Let the symptoms do their thing. Breathing in. Breathe out. Your body has carried and stored so much stuff. And this is the session that helps. Just let that go. We don't need to carry it in the body anymore. Thank you, symptoms. Thank you, body, for stopping us. I was pushing way too hard. I was carrying things I didn't need to carry. And now I'm giving myself this reboot. I know what to do now. I know how to take good care of myself. And I'm just going to do this one breath at a time. Yep, you got this. Stay on this part of the session with me. People are starting to drop like flies. Stay on here, okay? We're in this. Grab a sip of water if you need to. This is where the body's releasing. It's where people start to kind of trinkle out of the session. And we're almost done. Okay, so we're going to do a little speaking process to help because I know it's overwhelming and it's kind of intense. Especially for if you're new to this. Okay, here's how it looks. We're going to take three loving, slow breaths down through the body. Okay? And connect with your symptom. Close your eyes. And repeat after me. If the feelings or the symptoms in my body could speak, what they're really trying to say is, and what's the first thing that comes to you? And we're going to do that speaking process again. It's safe to stay. It's safe to be here, okay? It's safe to just feel what's going on in the body. It's on its way out. Okay, and this is muted. And um, okay, perfect. Thank you for sharing that Dana. I really appreciate it. Yeah, so everyone's gonna, so sometimes people, when they do this process, sometimes we get positive answers, sometimes we get not so positive answers. So it's just whatever, whatever answers you get, it's on its way out. So take three deep breaths once you get your answer. Okay, so Dana, if you can, just close your eyes, go back into the breathing. So this is, remember, this is the part of the session where people kind of leave. So just hang out with us, okay? You're safe. Nothing bad's going to happen. Okay, perfect example. So if the feelings or sensations or symptoms my body could speak, what I was trying to say is, slow down, yeah? So when you get the answer, take three deep breaths in. Okay. There we go. The tightness in my chest asked me to stop carrying punishment. Beautiful. That's it. Okay. Okay, we're going to do that speaking process again. So. All right, here we go. Let's close our eyes. Take a few deep breaths in. And with each breath in, it's going to help support your body and the stored symptoms and the emotions. Okay, it's on its way out. Here we go. Everyone, repeat after me. If the feelings or the symptoms in my body could speak, what they really, really want to say is, and speak the first thing that comes to you. And when you get the answer, and if you don't get an answer, that's okay. Just keep, keep breathing. Okay, beautiful Dana. Yeah, I love that. Okay. Tightness in my chest says, you gotta process that grief, girl, okay? And so just notice in your body where you've had those lingering symptoms. Just gently send three loving breaths and open it up. So if you do, if you're carrying grief, just gently open up your lungs. Just slowing it down, sending your, you know, every time you take that big, deep breath in, you're loving yourself more. You're giving back to yourself. And this is the best gift you can give to yourself. Thanks for staying on here with me. This, it takes a warrior to do this type of inner work, okay? You're doing amazing. Beautiful Catherine. Yeah, you've been through a lot. You've been through a lot of trauma. And the session is here to just, you know, the breath, God's in each breath that you breathe. Just receive it. Okay? All right, and let's ask your body one more question and then we'll get right back into the breathing. We'll go right back into the rhythm. So let's take three deep breaths together. Opening up the body with each breath that we take. One more deeper breath, keeping the eyes closed. Repeat after me. If the feelings or the symptoms in my body could speak, what they want me to know is, what they want me to, my body wants me to know is, and then speak the first thing that comes to you. Everyone's doing amazing. Good job. Okay, and let me know what your body wants you to know. You're doing great. If you want, some people can't really use their hands right now. Some people can't move during this part of the session. So, okay. Beautiful. I love it. I am safe. Yeah, there we go. Great job. Kick and booty. Good job, Cam. Good job, everyone. Okay, so we are coming into the final chapter of your hour. Breathe. And you're doing so beautifully. This is the, this is the best part of the session. This is where all the miracles really come in for you. And so just be really gentle because the body's just doing its thing. As you can probably notice, you'll have a symptom here and then it'll shoot somewhere else and then it'll go somewhere else. So that, that just means the body's kind of working its way through. Excuse me. Oxygen's working, okay? So let's take three deep breaths in. Beautiful Shar. I love it. Thank you for sharing, everyone. Yeah, so wherever you have symptoms in the body, let's just keep opening them up with each breath in. This is the part of the session where you want to keep the breath flowing and continued. So just follow along with me. I love it Dana. Great. Yeah, just keep opening up, opening it up. So this session, it kind of like, it's kind of like you have to get through the dark and the icky and the donkey stuff to get to the light and the love and the goodness. And then you'll really love yourself by the end of the session. You got to clear out all that donkey stuff first. So you just made it through a lot, a lot of the gunk. Great, great job. Okay, I'm going to be quiet. Follow along with me. There should be more room in the body by now. So go for it. Inhale for three seconds. Soft exhale. Inhale for three seconds. Soft exhale. Inhale for three seconds. Soft exhale. And if you have experienced trauma in the lower part of your body, open up your hips with that breath in. Make more room down in your lower chakras. Let me know in the chat box. Excuse me. If this is intense for you, let me know in the chat. I'm sorry. This is, this is, it can be a tough, tough part of the session, okay? Oh, that's okay. That's okay, beautiful. Okay, so just follow along with me. Okay, and just, everyone, just hang with me for about five more minutes. This is the last part of the clearing. This can be the most triggering part of the whole session. Okay, that's all right. Ease off the pressure. If you're feeling irritable, just, it's okay. And Catherine, repeat after me. The reason why I can't breathe enough into my heart is because, or, or the reason I'm irritable is because. And let me know what you get. Speak the first thing that comes to you. Okay, everyone, just keep breathing through this last part. We're going to check in in just a few minutes with that speaking process. This is where the body gets really buzzy, activated. Just let yourself go, like just, this is that final clearing. We're all in this together. Okay, here we go. Breathe in. It might get really loud during this part of the session. Just take it one breath at a time. Slow the breath down. Softening the exhale. Slowing down the inhale. Softening the exhale. Keep your eyes closed. Keep breathing. This is the most important part. Here we go. It's clearing out. Everything is starting to clear right now. Try not to take the thoughts or the body symptoms personally. Breathe in. Breathe out. Just let it, let it come up, let it surface. You're safe. It takes a lot of energy to make ourselves push through and make ourselves do something. Or hang out with someone, or let's say we really don't like something and we still make ourselves do it anyway. And think of how much energy it takes to push ourselves when we really just don't want to do something. So try not to take your symptoms or the thoughts personally right now. Just keep breathing through all the layers that's, it's coming out right now. You're safe, you're loved, you're supported. It's gonna be okay. You got this. Some people during this last part of the session, sometimes they feel really good, sometimes like through the session, and then right at the last part, they're like, why don't I feel good anymore? Because your body's clearing. It's clearing everything out very gently. We do ask the body to just gently dissolve whatever it's carrying, whatever it's releasing. We ask that the body gently dissolve it with each breath that you breathe. It's safe to let it go. It doesn't mean you have to change anything right now. It doesn't mean you have to have it all figured out. Just slow yourself down and breathe. It'll pass here in the next couple of minutes, I promise. Just keep slowing the breath down. If any of you feel dizzy, let yourself feel dizzy, let it, let it, let it just do its thing. Take three slow, deep breaths in. Opening up the symptoms. No matter how you're feeling, no matter how you're doing, keep opening up. There's only two minutes left. The body is gonna be releasing over the next five minutes. I'll let you know when you can go back to your regular breath. Just one more minute. Slow it down. And take three deep, slow breaths. And before we go back to the regular breathing, let's check in with the body. Just send it a nice, loving, gentle breath in. If you want me, you may flip over on your side. This will help complete the session. This will help start to take you out of it. But let's ask your body a nice question before we complete. Let's kind of check in with those symptoms. We want to make sure that you're a lot, that you can breathe a lot deeper than an hour ago. Want to make sure that the congestion is cleared up. So just kind of hang out with me for the next few minutes or so. Okay, take a nice, deep breath in. And repeat after me. If the feelings or the sensations in my body could speak. What they really want to say is. And what's the first thing that comes to you? Just speak it out. Let me know what you get. Yeah, thank you, Catherine. Thanks for being here. And as soon as you get the answer, pull a big, deep breath in and give it to your body. Wherever you have, you have those symptoms or wherever you carry stress or have had anxiety in the past, just kind of pull that love in, pull the, pull the answer in. And really just let yourself be with your body. You did so amazing. That's not easy to lie down and breathe for an hour like that. It's very activating. So bravo. Good job at completing it. All right, let's see, let's see if the body. Let's see if it has one more answer. And then you're all done. Take a big, deep breath in. And repeat after me. If the sensations in my body could speak. What they want me to know is. And speak the first thing that comes to you. And just checking in. Catherine, how does your heart feel? Do you feel like you can like take a nice, deep, full breath in now? It's pretty wild what the body does. And then it opens up. So, but it's got to get through the, through the burdens and the stored emotions and stuff. So. Yeah, let me know. Let me know in the chat how everyone's doing. Take as much time as you need. Feels more expansive? Okay, great. Yeah, so let's, let's all breathe for just thirty, thirty more seconds, everyone. Let's just breathe for thirty more seconds together just to enjoy the stillness. And all the hard work that you just did to get here. And the willingness. You're very brave. Okay. All right, everyone, you are done. There might be some of you who are not feeling good right now. If you're not feeling good, please hang out for about five minutes with me until you're clear. Let me know how you're doing. You're more than welcome to unmute yourself and share. Thank you, Kimberly. Kimberly says that was amazing. Awesome. So glad. Please share with others. I'm gonna put this session in my bio. This free session will be, I'm gonna email it to you here in the next couple hours. You can use it anytime. Just hang out to whatever you gotta do. Thank you, Sarah. You want to make sure that you're, you're feeling complete with the session. If you don't feel complete, just, just, just breathe for a couple more minutes. If the symptom is really clogged or activated, let me know in the chat so I can speak you through it. Your work is done. You just breathed for a full hour. That's all you need. Go enjoy yourselves. Take a few days off. And you'll notice a lot of subtle changes over the next few days. So please keep me posted. Everyone did amazing. Good job. Okay. Oh, thanks, Georgia. Yeah, I'll email this session shortly. Hey Jess, were you able to do the full session? Oh yay. Awesome. Good. Pamela shares, I feel so light. Thank you. Wonderful. I haven't, Catherine, I haven't felt safe in my body for over a month. Thank you for holding the space and encouragement for me to remember. Then I can find moments of safety. Yeah, way to go. Good for you. Good for you. Good job, Catherine. Okay, so a lot of you might be feeling great and released. There might be some of you who don't feel good right now, and that's okay. Just breathe for two more minutes. My heart feels sad now. Okay, so take three deep breaths into your heart. Thanks, Ryan. Thanks for being here. I hope you had a good session. And repeat after me. If you're feeling sad in your heart right now, repeat after me. If, but what you want to do, take a big, deep breath in, blast it open. Just, it's releasing right now. So just try to be gentle. Repeat after me. If the sadness in my heart could speak. What it really wants to say is. And let me know what you get. iPhone, finally feel calm. Thank you. It's been months. Oh, gosh, good. I know, doesn't that feel so good to feel calm? I've had to do more breath work just to stay in that calm state. I don't like to do that much breath work, okay? I have to do an hour session a week just to be, to keep it calm through these times. So great. I'm so glad you're feeling calm. That was a hard one. Lots of sorrow, sadness today. Aw. Yeah, so hang out if you need to, Erin. And just breathe for a couple more minutes until, you know, you just feel, you know, wrap yourself up until you feel calm. So just breathe for two more minutes. Beautiful. Yeah, okay, so I want you to just breathe for a couple more minutes. If, if the sadness in my heart could speak, what it's trying to say is, I hate you. Why would it say, why would it start again? Okay. So just repeat after me. Take a big, deep breath in, close your eyes, and repeat after me, Dee. The reason why I hate myself, or the reason why I hate you is because, how about that? Do that one. The reason why I really hate you is because. And then let me know, Dee, what you get. Speak the first thing that comes to you. Okay, Charlene, having trouble not feeling angry? Are you, are you trying to make yourself feel angry? What do you mean by that? Having trouble not feeling angry? What are you trying to feel? Oh, okay. Feeling angry. Okay, so let's just take a few deep breaths into the body. We want to open up the anger. So our liver stores anger, right? And so your liver's detoxing right now. And so just keep, just keep opening up your liver with that breath in. And repeat after me, Charlene. The reason I'm feeling angry is because, or, or do this, sorry. If the anger in my body could speak. What it's really wanting to say is. What it's really wanting to say is. And then Shar, Charlene, let me. I'm not saying your name right, sorry. Um, let me know what you get, if the anger in my body could speak, what it really wants to say is, what I'm really angry about is, and then let me know what you get. Hmm, okay, so if the anger and, and if, okay, here we go, so everyone take a few deep breaths in. And if anyone's on here who's complete with this session, you're more than welcome to go, you did amazing. Everyone on here who's still on here, you're doing amazing as well, just keep being gentle. I'll leave it to Erin. Okay. Erin, repeat after me. The real reason I'm sad is because. And just let it come out girlfriend. Okay, so back to the heart. Dee, repeat after me. Okay, so, um, so you're, you're not feeling good enough, right, so. Let me go back. Okay, so I want you to just breathe right into your heart. And, um, just open it up. So if you have this script running your whole life that you're not good enough, right? I, I hate myself because I'm not good enough, and it's just running the whole show, right? So you're just, your heart is actually being, it's opening right now, so that's why you're, you're actually, you're feeling what it feels like to not feel enough, enough. So I want you to just keep, oh, just blasting your heart with that love. And I want you to focus breathing in. No matter what the mind says, I am good enough. No matter what the mind, my mind says, I am good enough. No matter what people think of me, I am good enough. And then just, just gently breathe for two more minutes Dee, and that'll help clear it. Everyone, you're doing amazing. This is not easy. It's not easy, you're doing great though. Oh, of course, it's, you're perfect Georgia. Okay, yeah, if you want, you can just keep breathing along, so here's the breathing pattern. I just have to make sure everyone is, you know, okay before we go, wanna make sure everyone's clear. Okay, so we're breathing in. Soft exhale. Breathing in. Soft exhale. Okay. And. Alright. I'm releasing, oh, there we go, yeah, just very tender. Very loving, soft, gentle breaths. Yeah. Good job, good job. Georgia, is there any, anything? Anything you'd like to clear in your body, any symptoms? How are you doing Catherine, are you okay? You can unmute yourself if you'd like, I just wanna make sure everyone, sure everyone's good. Okay Catherine, other Catherine, having a lot of chest pains. Right in the center of my chest, okay, so Nelson, take a few deep breaths into your heart. I want you to like, open up that chest pain, like, don't be afraid of it. Open it up with your breath in. Make more room, one more deep breath in. And Catherine, repeat after me, close your eyes if you want, it helps kind of like sink into the symptom. If this chest pain. If this chest pain could speak. What it really needs to say is. Yeah. So both of you Catherns, repeating after me, if this, if this chest, you, you both have the same symptom. If this, if this pain in my chest could speak. What it really wants to say is. Just. Speak whatever comes to you. And then take three deep breaths in. This pain in my chest could speak, what it really wants to say is. Just like get it out of there. Sink into it, let yourself trust the answer, like the first thing that you see or flash on. Okay Georgia. You're beautiful, awesome. Okay, so if you want, you can just spend a few minutes breathing into that flare and just slowing the breath down. Opening up the flare, just take a few minutes. You're good, no, that's part, that's what this part of the session's for, you're good Georgia, okay. How are you doing Catherine? How's, how's everyone doing? So if that pain in my chest could speak, just let go, let go of the sadness from the past, it's time, yeah. Just put your hand on. Just put your hand on your chest and just spend a couple minutes, just because now the body can release, now that you spoke that out, now it can release. You might have tears that come, that flow, so just breathe in. Breathe out. Breathe in. Breathe out. Good night Dana, thank you. I appreciate you. Thank you so much. Alright, beautiful, and so the other pain in the chest said. You are whole, yeah, and then pull in that truth. Open up that symptom with the breath in, it's on its way out. Breathe in your wholeness, breathe in your healing power. You are so strong, so beautiful, so powerful. Awesome. Great, and just breathe for one more minute. Now the symptoms, when you speak them out, they'll either, they'll start to dissolve. And so notice what your chest is doing. Notice what this, you know, it, it'll start to dissolve or it'll intensify, but I'm pretty sure you're near the end, so, body's really amazing what it does. Okay, and let's ask everyone on here, let's ask your body one more question, take a big, deep breath in. And repeat after me. If the feelings and, and sensations in my body could speak. What they want me to know is. Feelings or sensations of my body could speak, what they want me to know is. Oh, I love that. Yeah, we are here to help, yeah, breathe that in. Isn't it beautiful what the body says? It's just really simple, you just connect with your breath. And then it connects you to your body and your knowingness. And your inner guidance, and your body is the temple. It's the temple of the Holy Spirit, you got this, you don't need anyone else. Just you and your breath. Okay. How's everyone doing, are you clear, thumbs up? Oh, good, yay, good job. Catherine, I haven't seen you in a while girlfriend. You look, haven't you been on here before? Yeah, 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 okay, I've, I've been thinking about you. You can, if you, anyone wants to share, you're more than welcome to, you can unmute yourself. If you want, you don't have to.
Hi, no, I'll do it. Um, hi.
Hi, I, I've been thinking about you, and I love that you're here.
Yes, yes, I've been, I mean, you, you helped me so much, several months ago, you helped me so much, and then I, I stopped doing, um, your recorded sessions, and so I, um, I got sick with COVID um, this past week, and so when I saw your email, it actually worked with my schedule this time, and I'm just so happy to be here and to breathe with you, so it's so, it's so phenomenal, I've done other breathing sessions, um, and it's really not as effective as yours. And I'm just excited to see in this next week how it unravels.
Yeah, 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 awesome, well, thank you, that's a huge compliment, and yeah, give your, give yourself three to five days and you'll really notice what this session did for everyone on here, so. Yeah, I'm, and let me know, let me know how, let me know how you're doing after.
Yeah.
Um, because I, I'd like to create or do something to help others through this period, you know, if, if they get sick, so.
Okay.
That's kind of the point of this session was to see how everyone, everyone does, and if, if it works for them.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a tester. Thanks, thank you so much, it's nice to see you, I was thinking about you like a month ago, and then I had a flash of you the other day, and I was like, oh, I wonder when I'm gonna see her again.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks Karen, thanks for being here too, thank you. Okay, how's, how's everyone? Clearing Catherine? Nelson? Great job everyone, you did amazing, Jessica, how are you doing lovely? Ryan, are you still on here, are you, is it, is everyone alive? Thank you Catherine. Alright. I'm gonna stop the recording.